Can we take those two requests and take that out of reserves? That would not impact the levy? To move those forward without impacting the domino that would be associated with that into operation?
Yes, you could.
And if that is the case, I'd like to make a motion to fund the shade structure for $6,500 and move the...
I'd like to call to order the City of Okinawa Council meeting, common council meeting for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Have all appropriate meeting notifications been made?
Yes, Your Honor, they have.
Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Zaffel.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Present.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of meeting minutes for August 17th, 2021.
So move Zaffel.
Second, Ellis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Without objection, I'd like to move item number mayoral appointments with council confirmation, the one for library board. I'd like to move that to this spot to help our guest and our library director present that appointment. Is that good with counsel? Great. Betsy, if you could do the presentation, please. There are two appointments for this, for the library board. We fortunate one person could join us. Fortunately, they're both not able to make it tonight. Betsy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have two vacancies on the library board, and Mayor is suggesting the appointment of Karen Chenzurud, who had a prior commitment, can't be here tonight. But Carrie Hansen is the second, and she is available here this evening.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Come on up.
Hi.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Alderman Kavieski.
How are you? Thank you so much for putting your name in and being willing to serve. I just have a couple of questions. And I got to serve on the library board with Bessie, and it's a great service to the community. Over the last year or so, though, there's been a couple of books on the promotional circulate, circular. Do you find yourself in a position at being on the board to help with oversight for any any issues associated with books that may come onto the shelves or be promoted that may not be appropriate for the community?
Can you give me an example?
Um...
My favorite book when I was a kid was Fahrenheit 451, so that's a little...
Um, there...
Ray Bradbury.
There was a, and I think you, Bessie probably is aware of, there was a particular book in the March circular that was probably somewhat inappropriate for being promoted. As you may be aware, there's there's sexual content and all kinds of fun things that are being discussed now in the educational setting. And the library is definitely an educational setting. But if you came across a book that you thought might not be appropriate to be promoted on the board... a book that you thought might not be appropriate to be promoted on the board, would you bring that to the board's attention and bring that to Betsy's attention?
Seeing the book, like, on the website, that it's there, we have certain promotional, you know, when you first open up the website, and then here are these books that are promoted? And would I be able to...
Give voice for the community and say, hey, maybe that's not the one that we should be promoted?
And so, and that's one of the roles of the board is to...
Well, I would...
Of course, to decide which books we promote.
Well, to represent the community and represent proper operation of the library.
I'm sure I could. I'm just, I think I might be reading too much into your question, just about like, I thought you were kind of talking about banning certain books, but I think you're just talking about, you're just talking about promoting them.
Yeah, I'm not a big promoter of banning books.
Yeah.
At all.
Okay.
But promoting appropriate content is different than allowing those books to be on the shelf.
Got it.
So, as a member of the library board, if you came across something like that, to provide some input as a library board member, to say, maybe we shouldn't do that, or maybe we shouldn't do that again, to provide that voice as part of the community that provides that oversight for the library board, would you feel comfortable doing that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. Cool. Thanks.
Any further comments?
Throw me a challenge right away, huh?
Yeah. I knew you were up for it, so I...
Absolutely.
And Alderman Ellis?
Yeah, I just want to go ahead and thank you for putting your name in the hat, and thank you for serving the community.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Do council have any questions for Betsy with regard to either one of the applicant? And again, thank you for coming and serving our community. Any further questions?
I don't have any questions.
Alderman Rozak?
No, I don't have any questions for Carrie. I have my continuing concerns about this general process. Number one, I can't believe in this modern world that we still have people printing out forms and filling them out by hand and submitting them. I've asked for probably, and this isn't just on you, Mayor, I mean, at all, I've been asking for like two or three years that these forms be electronically submitted. We have Wi-Fi, we have Internet, we have free Internet, where you can take an Internet device home from the library to your house, and we still have people printing out forms sideways and then hand-printing them in. So I don't understand this process. I do think it's important, no matter who's being appointed, for my purposes, that they're here. So I will vote on Carrie.
Yes.
Will not vote on the other gal, even though she has a prior commitment. I understand that. I think one of our jobs as the council is this chance to ask some questions and that oversight, and those persons should be here to expose themselves to that. My final commentary, and I'll continue to make this commentary about these appointments in general, why do we not have resumes or CVs from these folks? I'm sure you have a resume.
I do.
Yeah, and if you had an electronic fillable form that had a little button that you could add your PDF CV, this would make this process much simpler, because we're evaluating people to be put on boards, in this case, for the next, till 2023. So this is a long appointment. This is meaningful. The library board is semi-autonomous and controls their own budget, as we know, outside of control of council, so these are very important positions. And I, she's very nice, I'm glad you put your name in, but we don't know who she is, because we don't have a CV, we don't have a resume, and when we put ourselves out for elected office, everyone digests who we are. We put our resume out there, we put out who we are, people investigate us. We don't really have that same opportunity. So I will vote for Carrie, I will vote against the other gal for not being here and for not having a CV.
Alderman Ellis?
I agree with you, Matt. Service to community is service to the community regardless of whatever the prior commitment is. I will be voting for Carrie and not the other individual, regardless of what it is, unless they have COVID, in which case, that's a different situation, okay? As far as electronically, I'm shocked. I thought we were already in the 21st century here. If we're not, wait, this is 22nd century. Where are we? Something like that. If we're still in the 18th century, we got an issue here, and with something we're going to have to address at some point, okay? But yeah, so thank you.
To try to help you with that issue, just basically want a fillable PDF. The, some of the things we've looked at is there are a lot of issues we have with our current website, and also remember, we just hired a new IT manager, so this is in the queue, it just hasn't gotten done yet.
Oh, it's his fault.
And we'll do our best to do that. We've tried, and we asked all the applicants for their resumes. We may not have asked you, so I'm sorry if we did not. Most people don't have them. We're frankly lucky just to get people to...
I know.
To go in, so we'll continue to ask for them, and we'll try to make sure it doesn't slip through the cracks. But to that point, it is in the queue, and hopefully it can, it can move forward in that.
Well, I'm blaming the IT guy.
No, not at all. He's just, he's got too much stuff.
No, I'm blaming him.
Okay. It's not him. So it's just in the queue. Alderman Spiegelberg?
What does the process look like if Carrie is approved, but Karen isn't? Then, does that come back around as an appointment by you at the next meeting?
It can come back.
And then gives her the chance to be here?
If that's what you would like, we can make that request.
Okay.
If I may, I just don't want Karen to see this, and I don't want to feel, I just feel like I, she asked, I said, "You're welcome to be there tonight if you can," and she had a meeting, she's on the Oconomowoc Junior Women's Club as well. Thursday, or excuse me, Tuesday nights are not a normal night for her to be have library board duties, because she did serve on, serves on the other board. I said, "You have that prior commitment, you're applying to do this, but you have this other board you're already serving on." So I want you to know that I was the one who sort of told Karen, "Don't worry about it too much if you can't make it," otherwise, because she did say, "Should I move it?" Can I, I didn't pressure her to do that.
Yeah. She is a quality person. I'd recommend you approve both, and I wouldn't have brought them to you, but that's going to be your choice. Alderman Mulder?
This will be the most uncomfortable moment of library board, I can absolutely assure you, and you can use it as a stepping stone to city council, as I do. So it's worth this grilling, let me tell you.
This isn't bad. This isn't bad.
Alderman Kavieski?
I am aware of Karen and her history as well, and I will be voting to confirm her, even though she's not here. I think she is a quality applicant and individual, but I totally understand the concerns associated with that, and I also understand the position that you offered to her, because that's typically not been the reaction historically. But as we continue to work on improving the process and bringing those who care enough about the community, to serve the community into the public light, we'll consider that in the future. But I look forward to confirming you, as well as Karen.
What I'd suggest is we entertain a motion to confirm each one individually, since there are issues here. I also think, you know, we're in that transition mode, and we're trying to make, fix some of these things, and please don't ever feel it reflects negatively on the library, or department head, or you as a, as an applicant to serve and get paid such a high wage. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve our appointment that's standing in front of us first.
So move.
Second, Mulder.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Karen, even though she's not able to attend, but based on what you've read and recommendations from Betsy. Alderman Ellis?
I'd like to trump your recommendation and just make a recommendation that we just postpone it until she can come here, and then we can vote on it.
I'll move that we approve Karen for the library board.
All right, fine.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye, why not?
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
So, thank you very much. Welcome aboard. Thank you for your service, and we will continue to improve the process. We were aware of it, and slowly we'll get some of these things squared away. So sorry for putting you in an uncomfortable position. Okay.
You're awesome.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to move on to comments and suggestions from the citizens. So in comments, I have one blue card. If anyone else would like to make a comment, you have approximately three minutes to kind of share with council your viewpoint. Please come up to the podium, please state your name and address, and share with us your concerns. Lynn Wright.
Lynn Wright, 707 Merrill Gold Street. Okay, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, and since I put in the card, I saw the note about the new business on the revised memorandum of understanding between the City of Oconomowoc and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the 67 pedestrian underpass. So I'm hoping I'll hear some good things about that. But just very simply, when I hear about all the fun things of, in the operating budget or consideration, for a splash pad, for a shade structure, for the Champion Field food stand, for lights for the skate park, for $300,000 for Rockwell Park, and not additional funding to open up that tunnel, it does not make me happy, because, as you all know, I, there is no project, public safety project, that is more important right now, or any project, I should say, that is more important right now than opening up that tunnel. And maybe I misunderstood what Kevin said, but I was under the understanding that funds have been allocated to move the utilities. And now I'm not sure that that is true, and something about, it's at a $500,000, it's $200,000. Again, I'm not sure. I'm just going based on what I heard, whether it is $200,000 for utilities, and that's not in the budget. Maybe that's part of this, what you guys are talking about. But I'll just end with, I know that there's $4 million in the city budget. I know the mayor has told me that 1.68 million, 1.68 million in stimulus funds, I don't know whether we've gotten it yet or not, is coming. Whether it comes from the $4 million, whether it comes from the 1.68 million, the county, the state, and the city needs to figure out how to open that tunnel. It doesn't need to be $2.7 million. It doesn't need to be this big fancy thing. That tunnel just needs to get open in stages, just like Rockwell Park. And so, please, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, let's move on to consent agenda items. We have item A and item B. Would you like any further discussion, or entertain a motion?
Move the consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Second, Shellpepper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the committee reports, consider act on resolution 21-R2982, authorizing a budget amendment to pay public fire protection charges for 2021. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. So before you tonight is the budget amendment to cover the public fire protection charges that are due from the city due to the delay in getting our water rate case approved. I, the good news is, the water rate case has been approved and is effective September 1st, so the numbers that we have in here are correct and current. So we met about this a few weeks ago. The finance committee recommended that, of the choices that we had, basically, the Public Service Commission gave us a choice of putting this on a payment plan, and we decided that that wasn't a good idea. The city has some reserve funds that we can look at. We looked at the general fund reserves, but currently, we're using that for capital projects and those kind of things. And then I also talked to you about some reserve or surplus funds that are in our internal service funds. So you have the balances in those internal service funds, and the recommendation is to make a budget amendment to have $300,000 come from the risk management fund, and $242,000 from the IT fund transferred to the general fund to make that payment. Those transfers do leave both of those funds still in good condition with adequate reserves.
So as a reminder, it's a budget amendment, and we need a super majority. I'd like to entertain a motion. So moved, Ellis.
Kavieski, second.
Any further discussion?
Doesn't matter. Is it five or is it six with his vacancy?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Super majority.
Five or six?
Five.
Okay. For a super majority.
Because we're absent a member, he's not just not here. Right, he's actually vacated the seat.
That's what I thought, okay.
Alderman Kavieski, come in.
Yeah. I'd just like to thank you for the review that you provided during the last meeting. I know it wasn't comfortable. I think it shows leadership in providing not only the ownership of that, but the options for solution, and I'm glad that we're, we found a solution that's not going to impact the taxpayer, even though you're not the head of the operations, and I appreciate that. So I want to say thank you in public for that.
Any further comments? Alderman Shellpepper?
Yeah, I just want to recap as well a little bit on what this PFP charge was about to begin with. And so this was really to expand the base of people who were paying into this system. As of now, the only people that were paying for the PFP were people who paid towards the levy.
Correct.
Now, we're going to have nonprofits, individuals living outside of city boundaries who use our water are now going to be paying for this. So it was the responsible decision for our city as a whole and for the taxpayers to make this switch. It's lessening the burden, and burden sharing more equitably. The other reason we had to do it was so we could actually fund important expenses for the city, so we could get new police cars, right?
Right.
So we could get a new plow.
Yeah.
And so I, this bugs me, because I've seen on, you know, social media groups supporting certain, you know, issues that are before this council right now, that are calling for people to be fired, using this as an example of malfeasance and negligence and, you know, shadowy, shadow dealings. It infuriates me, because some of the people making these comments are some of the people whose, you know, jobs are actually benefiting in a way, and it's also benefiting our citizens, because extra equipment is being provided to those areas of the city staff, as well as, you know, extra resources being provided to our citizens. We could not continue to provide the excellent level of service that's currently provided this city with the equipment we have if we had not made this switch. We would have always had to be cutting, every year. It would have been a battle. This was the right thing to do. And so unfortunately, there was some miscommunication on understanding when the PFP was going to come through. There's been ownership, it's been identified, we're moving forward. And so I think the citizens should be happy with this decision.
Alderman Kavieski?
Just real quick to tag on to that, because I think this council would have considered this opportunity in prior years, but this opportunity only comes about when you have a rate case. So the timing associated with it is directly tied to that. So I completely agree with you, and I think the public should hear that again and again, that it is more of an equitable sharing of costs associated with that public fire protection, and ultimately is saving them, as our taxpayers and our constituents, money.
Alderman Rozak?
Not to make it all rosy, but in general, the PFP vote was the right vote and the responsible vote to move that funds around to people outside the district that are using the water, that are using the funds. The spend this council did, though, under direction of staff, to spend the money like we did before we knew for sure when the rate case was going to be, and that was a mistake that we made. And then when the rate case continued to delay month after month after month, we needed to have been made aware of that, so we could have made adjustments, potentially reserve funding to purchase, maybe we could have stopped the purchase of the plow truck and waited one more year. I voted against the PFP, not because of the concept of the PFP, because I think it is the responsible vote, but my fear was that we were just going to immediately go and spend it, and there was going to be no actual tax break for levy-paying residents, and there wasn't. So we have created another tax. You can call it whatever you want. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, because like Alderman Shellpepper said, nonprofits, hospitals, people outside the district are also paying that fee. But at the same time, we didn't reduce the levy, we just spent it. And I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad thing, because of what we had to spend it on, like new firefighters, like police protection, and critical core services. The problem is, every time we get a little basket of money, right, so here we got an extra $830,000, we just spent it, poof. Now every year it's spent, poof, and we have to raise levy. We were just told in the capital funding project that we... We were just told in the capital funding project that we're going to have to use unused levy from last year to cover our operating budget. That's why we don't spend the money right away when we have it. So that's why I voted against it, and that was the mistake, I think, intermixed with communication gaps and communication issues. And hopefully we learned a lesson not to spend before we know if we have it.
I just got to push back on that, though, because you're saying you agreed with that there was the responsible spend. That was the only way we were going to be able to spend it. I mean, was by doing the rate case when we did it, by making the switch now. So you don't want to take the hard vote to actually fund the things that you're saying are needed and important to do.
No, no, no. That's what happened. That's not true. I'll take the hard vote when we get to operations, and I'll cut things that are unnecessary. What I'm saying...
They weren't going to be able to cut them out.
No, but the reason, the reason I voted against the PFP was not because the PFP was a bad idea at the time we're doing the rate case. I voted against it because of what the next line item right below the PFP, which was, hey, we got eight hundred thirty thousand dollars, let's spend it right away. That was the mistake. That's the thing we shouldn't have done, and I recommended us not doing that, that we should have waited to spend the money and not spent it all right away. Had we done that, had we just reserved three or four hundred grand out of that, we would not be in a five hundred twenty-four thousand dollar hole, bottom line. And now we're using the reserve funds that we built up from years past through conservative budgets to pay for this. And look, you know, stuff happens, right? So...
But we weren't voting on whether or not to, when the rate case was going to go through, we were voting on whether or not to approve it. And so maybe there could have been nuance in when we were going to, you know, understand that rate case to go through. I understand what you're saying there, but the vote was on whether or not to make the switch, not, under the assumption this switch was going to happen within a certain amount of time. That was the information we were getting without giving that word.
Correct, but we immediately, as soon as we voted on the PFP charge, we immediately, the next line item that night was to vote on spending the eight hundred thirty thousand we just saved the taxpayers. And that was levy money that people were being charged. They're still being charged it. We never saved anybody a penny. We just spread out the tax burden to a bigger and bigger swath of people. That's the reality. We just immediately spent it. We didn't give people a break. So for every eight dollars that people are spending more on their utility bill now, they didn't give an eight-dollar break on their levy. We immediately spent it, and now we've spread it out to more people. But more people are, now more people are putting into our pot. That's the point.
On police cars, on plow trucks, on roads, on things that we absolutely had to do and have.
The skate park was one of the main items. That would have been the first thing not spent on.
Correct, agreed.
Wow, okay. We have a motion and a second. Call roll, please. Remember, this is a budget amendment, so think strongly about your decision.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Nay.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
So the passes, and that'll move forward. Let's move on to the next item. Next item of business is the unfinished old business Consider Act on Resolution twenty-one dash R two nine eight one, rescinding Resolution number twenty-one dash R two nine seven oh, preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments.
Hi. So we go back to the early nineties when there was an issue with regard to development of the Regent Road Residence, I call them, the area that is to the north of Olympia. It involved a kind of development, a apartment development, and now the vacation home development. At that time, the condo and apartment developer entered into a developer agreement that said, hey, we don't want to build the road, Regent Road, to city standards. And this common council said, okay, we won't make you build it to city standards, but at such time as we do, you will agree to allow us to special assess all of the costs associated with that road to you. Months, years, decades go by, and finally, it's time to pay the piper because we need to redevelop that road. So this common council, as part of the redevelopment of the entire area, entered into an agreement with the main developer within the TID to go ahead and proceed with a special assessment of those costs. Under the statute that is involved, there is a procedure whereby we give those folks notice. We have our engineer prepare a engineering report as required by statute. The engineer felt that about fifty percent of the cost should be passed on to these folks in that they're benefited to that extent. We had a public hearing. This common council said, nope, I don't think so. This common council said, we need to eliminate one leg of that and divide the rest of it in half. In other words, a portion of that was from sixty-seven to the roundabout, and from them fifty percent, that would be eliminated. And fifty percent of the value or the cost of the leg of Regent Road reaching to the complex would be their cost. The original engineer's estimate had the cost to these folks totaling about four hundred seventy-three thousand dollars, which would have resulted in a unit assessment of about thirty-nine hundred dollars. After you directed the engineer to go back and take a second stab at it, engineer came up with a hundred thirty-seven thousand for their portion of this project by eliminating those aspects of the project that you suggested, which would result in a thirteen-hundred-dollar assessment per unit. In the meantime, in the background, there's an issue related to some easements that need to be released. And appropriately, I think, the folks there said, why should we release easements that benefit us if we're still going to be hit with an assessment? So I took it upon myself to talk to Wongard and say, hey, how are we going to deal with this? And the result was a win-win-win situation, in my estimation, where the Regent Road Residence will not be assessed a penny. The four hundred thirty-seven thousand that would have otherwise been paid for by these folks under the developers' agreement and under the agreement that was signed in the nineties will be paid by Wongard in the following manner if you approve this resolution. The proceeds from the sale of our eleven-point-eight acres, a portion of that, four hundred thirty-seven and change, four hundred seventy-three and change, will go towards paying that portion of the cost of this road. Now you say, well, gee, we were going to get that as a city. No, we weren't. Hundred percent of the costs under the TID and the project plan and our agreement have to go into the project to pay project costs. So the effect of taking those monies, diverting them to pay these assessments instead of hitting the three entities that are involved here will be that unless a greater increment is created earlier, Wongard is going to have to wait to get their paygo. Simple as that. So they, if they, bottom line is, these monies are being diverted to pay for project costs that otherwise would not be paid from the proceeds that would be received by the city. And instead of taking that four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and paying down debt, which is not in jeopardy because we have plenty of room there because of the fact that the paygo is at the end of the line, it's taking care of this problem. I can tell you that Wongard's a hundred percent on board with this. The folks that have the apartments and the condos are a hundred percent on board with this, and the vacation owners are one hundred percent on board with this. It's a miracle.
Questions? Alderman Rosak.
Yeah, briefly, I was working with Stan and all these folks on this issue since, like, right after the meeting, and looked at these documents prior to the final versions as well as met with a lot of the folks at Regent Road and talked with them. I think this is a good solution. I think this is something where the city at one point probably should have communicated this better. We also goofed up early on by not recording that developers' agreement back in the nineties. I mean, it should have been recorded so these people were on notice that there was a potential special assessment in the future. Whether that would have ever changed the purchase price of a property or not, at least it could have been like, hey, sorry you didn't look at your documents, but, you know, here's what it is. I was disheartened that we voted to assess them anything. I think this is a good solution. And I think that to wrap up what Stan said in a really fine bow is Wongard is paying for this by getting paid back later by four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, the money for the project. So it's essentially pushing back their timeline, so, you know, it'll take them a tad bit longer to close that TID out essentially, and that's kind of the payout. And I think this is a win-win, as Stan said. And the folks that we met with are all a hundred percent in agreement with it, obviously, because they don't have to pay anything, but also they have to release those easements, and they have to agree to do that for this thing to take place.
This was a really nice job by Stan and Matt, so thank you both. It's also an example of what we, as a current council, need to make sure it doesn't happen again, because for a landowner to be assessed when they had absolutely no idea, it was not on their title, there was no documentation, we as a council, at least a current council, needs to make sure nothing like this happens in the future. And so I think as we find these things going forward, we've got to make sure we don't make some of those same mistakes. Any further questions? Alderman Shell Pepper.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand how we even got to the point then, if we understood these easements to be, you know, existing, how come we didn't get this worked out behind the scenes and before we had to put the Regent Road folks into this position to begin with and go back and forth? To me, this whole thing seems hard for me to wrap my head around as to how we got to where we're at. Seems like a lot of...
I can explain that very simply.
Shortcomings.
Very simply, these are not city easements. They're private easements. If you look at that...
Okay, so we didn't do any due diligence ahead of time to understand the kind of private easements there?
Oh, no. If, no, that was a hundred percent Wongard's problem, that if they can't get these folks to release these easements, they can't build the apartments they want to build, which means that the TID will be delayed and will not create as much increment as we otherwise could. Wongard was going to eventually come to us to condemn these easements from these folks. And the easements don't benefit them at all. They have alternate routes. Somehow, you know how much of a quagmire, all of these private roads and all of these private easements and public easements that we have in private roads, that was a big part of why we wanted to get rid of this thing. But due diligence, they knew about it. They tried to approach these folks in April, May? Yeah, to try to eliminate them. And these guys, if I were in their seat, I'd do exactly the same thing. You want us to release these easements, and you want the city to, you know, special assess us? Forget it. They use leverage to get rid of these easements, but...
How come we had to end up doing the special assessment to begin with? That's what I'm...
Because...
It's not making sense.
Because we had an agreement by the prior developer to do it. It, it's very, very long-winded explanation, and, you know, Chaz, I can talk to you about, this has been a three-year process of trying to juggle, you know, cats for how long? I mean...
I would also say, can I? Just wait one second. Chaz, I mean, I fully agree with your frustration, and when I look at it from a city standpoint, the area that I thought that we could have done better is we saw those special assessments when the TIF was all put together. It was our understanding, all these property owners knew that they had these special assessments. The issue is they did not. That's where the big kerfluffle happened. That wasn't any of our fault, anything. It's what had happened prior through another agreement that was not recorded. None of these were put on these people's titles. I was told it was on their titles, and so I didn't have a problem with it because then they were informed when they bought the properties of these special assessments, but it was not. And so your frustration is one hundred percent warranted, and I applaud you for bringing that up. What we have is we have a situation over years that we're trying to fix. I think we've come up with a good solution. Is it ideal? No, but I think it's best for all the people. And if I'm a property owner and I had no idea this was coming, it doesn't matter if it's fifty bucks or five hundred thousand dollars, I should have known. And that's what we have to make sure. And so when we look at recordings for planned commissions, when we do things with the city, and we do these things with developments going forward, I think we've all seen that this can happen. We have to make sure it doesn't happen again, so you're spot on with your frustration.
Well, and I also just need a little further explanation as to exactly how Wongard is the one paying for this in the long run. I mean, can you go through that again and just break it down in very simple, you know, direct terms?
Wongard is paying us two point six five million dollars for the eleven-point-eight acres.
Understand that.
We are going to take four hundred seventy-three thousand of that and put it towards what would otherwise be the Regent Road contribution to that project.
Right. So my understanding is that's money that would have been in our pocket, though.
No, it would have been in the TIF.
No, no, explain that, though. Explain that.
Yes. Our pocket is a general fund. The TIF pocket is not the general fund.
Project cost, though. That money would have been going towards project cost.
It's going towards project costs, and what it is doing is delaying, since we're, what the development agreement, the TIF agreement contemplated, was that four hundred seventy-three thousand dollars is going to come from them, and it would pay down the debt that we have borrowed for this project. But instead, that four hundred seventy-three thousand is not coming from these folks. It is coming from Wongard. So that means that instead of, you know, that money being, you know, paid towards lowering the debt and then increasing the time that, or shortening the time that that debt is paid off, it will lengthen the time that that debt is paid off, and Wongard will have to wait until that debt is paid off before they get their money.
And remember, we get paid back first. The city gets paid back our money borrowed first before, because if we don't, we can hit our numbers, and if they don't hit their numbers, they don't get the last bit of money, potentially. They have to eat it.
I'd love to entertain a motion.
Rosak, move.
Second, Ellis. Second, Ellis. Any further discussions or questions for Attorney Riffle? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Compliments for all of you. That was a great way to get clarity on something that isn't real simple and straightforward. Onto new business, Consider Act on Developers Agreement for Jiffy Lube. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, everybody. The agreement before you tonight is one that has come before the council before. It's slight modification to the standard developers' agreement that comes through for a residential subdivision. That's because the Jiffy Lube project, as with the Bubbles Foam Farm, which is the other one, that's a private street with public utilities under it. So some of the things have been removed from our standard subdivision, but this is the exact same document that the council reviewed and approved for the Bubbles Foam Farm. So we're recommending that it be approved tonight.
Alderman Kavieski.
Are we going to take a motion, or can I ask a question?
Go for it, ask a question.
So while it's a private road, it meets all city standards?
Nope, not a chance. That's why it's a private road.
Forever shall be.
Yes, until they build it to a city standard.
Exactly. Alderman Rosak.
This is a question for Stan, I guess. I know when we talked about the Jiffy Lube, there was the discussion of that road connecting from the Jiffy Lube and the QuickTrip over to the Qdoba, and that there was kind of this letter from staff saying, never again, ever, thou shalt not pass unless you connect the road. Should we put something in this developers' agreement to that effect, or is that kind of overkill?
I don't think you can bind future potential developers with a two-party contract.
Okay, fair.
Like to entertain a motion, please? So moved, Ellis.
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak. Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Onto Consider Act on Revised Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Oconwalk and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for State Highway sixty-seven pedestrian road.
for State Highway 67 Pedestrian Underpass. Mr. Frye.
So I apologize to the group because I would have loved to have noted who was standing, sitting before me in 2014 when I stood at the podium, which was a big wood thing, and talked about this agreement. So 2014, when we're going through the planning for the widening of State Truck Highway 67, were you the only one here, Matt?
Just me.
And I, and I know you voted yes because it was one of your few yes votes, so I remember those.
Yeah, we spent $325,000.
Yeah. But at that time, at that time, we were pushing the DOT in order to put a structure underneath State Truck Highway 67 out of Oconnoock Parkway to serve as a future pedestrian underpass. They wanted an agreement in place that we would make sure that we connected into that. They gave us a seven-year timeframe to do that. We felt that that was reasonable because we knew that that would give us two grant cycles to go through. Project was completed in 2016, so we have until 2023 to make the connection. The other caveat was that if we did not make that connection within seven years, we also had to pay back the DOT the $500,000 that they had invested in this. The DOT is very well aware of the efforts that Waukesha County and the city have gone through for grant funding requests. And so when we were meeting with them to talk about different ideas and solutions, they actually came forward and said, you know what? We'll, we'll send you a revised MOU, the memorandum of understanding, that we're going to pull those restrictions out. So the document before you tonight makes it so that we do not have a penalty if we don't connect in seven years and we don't have to pay them back. So that is why we're here tonight recommending that approval.
Great. Alderman Ellis.
But that doesn't prolong this whole project, right?
No, no. We're, we have our foot on the gas pedal. We're, recently, Waukesha County submitted a C-MAC grant requesting $2.1 million of the $2.7 million price tag for the connection to this. We, they have another grant application that'll be going out early next year for a transportation alternative project for, you know, which would be a, a like amount. So we're taking a couple of different avenues to obtain the funds in order to make this a reality.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, real briefly, especially for Lynn, who's out in the audience, to ask some questions about this. Originally, back in 2014, we agreed and budgeted $345,000 for the additional structure, along with costs to be paid by Waukesha County of $260,000. And what we just did in the capital budget, I'm guessing because our utilities are, are doing this, we thought it was going to be 500 grand to move utilities around the Culver connection.
Correct.
And it's only going to be 200,000.
200,000.
And that's being done by our utility department.
Right. Yes, yes.
And that has been budgeted for 2022. So that's next year. And so they'll, it's because it's budgeted, they'll start prepping for that project and hopefully move those utilities sometime next year, putting us in the right framework to get this done.
Correct.
And so our, and the, the foot is on the gas pedal and it's pushed all the way to the floor. And it's all about money. And I can say to the public, and I appreciate your comment, Lynn, I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't want to have this completed. And Mark Frye and our staff have been working really, really hard on this. We also just sent out some word letters yesterday that Matt Travatuski and I did. So we're trying a bunch of different approaches. Most of what we've tried initially has not brought the capital funding to us. And we're, but all of these grants have always been potentials in the queue for several months. But we've been trying to push hard so we can do something in 2022. And we're not stopping. But it's, till we have the money, the frustration level will be high for everyone because I think we all share that concern. Alderman Kavieski.
Appreciate the continued efforts on, on getting this done because it is a priority. The grants that you mentioned that the Waukesha County has submitted for, I read to this council a few councils ago as a text from County Executive Paul Farrow. So I want to thank the county for not only identifying that early on, but fulfilling those requests and being a good partner in getting this done.
Alderman Shellpepper.
And I also said, we all want to see it get done, but not, not on the sole backs of the city taxpayers. That is not right. And so while I understand money put towards Rockwell Park or Sunshade might, you know, aggravate some people, the city taxpayers should not be the ones footing the sole bill for this. This is a state highway. Our conduit to the state is the county. And that's the way we're going to work this and we're going to make it happen. And so I, I just see it as a, it's a, it's like a false dilemma between saying, well, we're putting money towards Rockwell Park, but we're not funding the underpass. City taxpayers, we've put in our share, 400 grand almost, right? And, and we're probably going to have to put in more, from my understanding. So state needs to step up. Let's get it done. And we're doing that through grant funding. And I have faith in the pressure we're putting on through our leadership, so.
The county's put a lot of effort, a lot of time.
Yeah.
Department of Transportation, Paul Farrow, Tyler Fody, also Barb Dietrich. We've worked with all of them and they've all been incredibly engaged. So I want to make sure that, but this has been going on for, what, five, six months? It's still way slower than any of us want. But all, all of them have been fully engaged trying different avenues. We've tried several avenues that didn't work. But it comes back to what you said, Chaz. This should not have to be funded by city tax dollars. And so that's what we're really pushing hard to do. But we shouldn't have to wait for four or five years in a promise that it could happen. So that, that's that dichotomy that we're working on. And Mark has just done a phenomenal job in the due diligence in working with all the folks because we're trying to build the relationships with all these folks to do a lot of really cool things. Because we also have other intersections that are very significant. We also took a county road and we spent $7,500 to make it safer of city money. Good decision. Should we have had to do that? No. But what we're trying to do is do what's best for our community. Alderman Ellis.
Well, bottom line here is, is as far as I see it, if they wanted this thing, whether the state or the county, to get this done, this would have been done, period. So I don't want to hear any double talk. It's BS to me as far as I'm concerned.
Am I giving you double talk?
Not at all. I'm just saying, I want that, I want that for the record. I absolutely want that for the record, okay? What I want to thank you for is bringing up the fact that you didn't need a half million, but you needed 200,000, which then brings me to my next question, which is, why is it still over $2 million that we need?
And we're working hard to, to update all those numbers because to me, it seems absolutely ridiculous. It's been explained to me why it's that much. And I understand the justification, but it's still way overpriced. And so those are things that we're working on really hard to try to get a more reasonable number. We don't have that for you today to share.
Well, I'm going to say one other thing, and this is, this is something that's really concerned me. This is a very important project. This is a tremendously important project. And what my concern here is that somebody's going to die before this thing happens. And I have a problem with that. And there have been certain aldermen that have gone ahead and kind of thrown me under the bus thinking, telling everybody that at the end of the day, what I was doing was wrong. Let me explain something to you, Lou. You're wrong.
No.
Because the bottom line here is, what I did was so very important to bring this up. If you don't like it, you come to me. You don't go online. You don't go Facebook. You come directly to me and you and I have that conversation, period. What you did was wrong.
No.
Period. Now, I'm going to say this for the record. I want this thing looked at. I want this thing taken care of. I am not going to stop, as I stated, two months. I am not going to stop doing what I am doing until this thing is done. Because my concern here is somebody is going to get killed. I understand that there's a, that there's, there's politics involved here and it's all about the money. But the bottom line here is, if these people, on the state level and on a county level, wanted this project to get done, it would have been done already. That's the God's honest truth. And the next time you do that, Lou, I'm going to tell you right now, it's going to be about me and you, period.
I'm here, right now.
Let's, let's...
That's ridiculous.
No, it's not ridiculous.
Yeah, it is.
It's the God's honest truth. It's the God's honest truth.
Excuse me, Alderman Ellis?
Let's, let's...
I made comment on this floor that I thought it was inappropriate that somebody would take a shovel to...
Well, I'm making...
Hey, guys, I'm not arguing with you.
I'm telling you right now that what you said was wrong and it was...
Let's stop, guys. I, if you want to have a discourse, it's fine. But I'd like you to do it one at a time. And let's try to do it as respectfully as possible. So Alderman Ellis, I think we've heard your, your opinion. I appreciate that. Thank you. Alderman Kavieski, you had your hand up.
I'd like to make a motion. Move this forward.
Second, Rozak.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak. Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Onto the one other mayoral appointment and our next item. We're going to be talking about the Lake Country Municipal Court Administrative Committee. Our recommendation is for our city administrator, Matt Travatuski, to play that role. If he is unable to, then I would fill in as mayor.
I'd like to see a resume for Mr. Travatuski, please.
You've seen it.
Oh. Then we're okay.
Last, last spring, about a year ago.
Updated job application resume.
That was cute.
Couldn't resist.
I'd like to entertain a motion if, unless you have discussion.
Rozak, move.
Mulder, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto staff reports. I think we have a few staff reports. Diane, correct, Ms. Conan?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the first report, I just want to say, is that in-office absentee voting began today, September 7th, and goes on through Friday, September 17th, for the District III alderman. The election is September 21st. And it would be at the District III pole, which is our fire station, number one, located on Oconnoock Parkway. So then the second one is a life celebration for Bill Chapman on September 12th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Chapman Park on Oconnoock Parkway. There will be speaker, military salute, and then anyone wanting to immediately following can go through the walking pass and look at the way the park has been developed in honor and memory of Bill Chapman. So, you know, we hope everyone joins us for that.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Any other staff reports? I don't believe so.
Mayor, are we promoting this on Facebook, the, the voting and all that? Are we putting that out? And we've got the communications intern, right?
It, it should be, yes, but I...
Okay, I haven't, you know, I haven't been checking, so I just want to make sure.
I don't look at Facebook only when, once in a while.
Supposedly, that's what part of our communications intern job is.
Correct, correct. And that's our responsibility, absolutely. Good, good point. Reports or comments from aldermen? Alderman Kavieski.
This coming Saturday is September 11th and the 20th anniversary of the terrorist attack on our home soil. And I just wanted to recognize those we lost, those who served to help keep us safe, and those we've lost in that process. And, you know, as we've moved out of Afghanistan, those soldiers who served are, should be honored. Those alive, those who have passed, and we never forget. So I just wanted to make that comment. And if you're around on September 11th at 7 o'clock, there is a memorial at City Beach. And please, please, print to attend.
Morning or night?
7:00 p.m., I believe.
Okay, okay. Any other comments? Alderman Ellis.
Yes, I too. I want to thank the community showing the love and support that you've given to me. I love this community. I love serving this community. And how you've come alongside me at this darkest moment in my life is what brought me here tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
And on behalf of the entire council, we'd like to offer our deepest condolences and sympathies to you, Kevin, and your entire family.
Thank you. Any further comments from aldermen? One additional comment from the mayor. Scott, Chris, gentlemen, thank you for putting your hats in the ring. We really look forward to hopefully a good turnout for the election.